But I don't know about ever going to work.
Evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Will everyone please rise for the invocation delivered by our clerk Jeff Hall?
Almighty God, Creator of all and judge overall, we pray that you guide our work in this meeting and in all our duties. We pray for our officers and members of this legislature who serve and guard the welfare of the citizens of this community, that by thy blessing they may be enabled to discharge their duties honestly and well. We pray that by thy help they may observe the strictest justice and preserve unparnished our loyalty to our county and to thee. Amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to be allowed by legislature house. Before I move to the legislative conference, we have one presentation to make this evening. At this time, I'd like to invite the legislators from District Four and the reps from the Challenger Baseball League to join me in the well.
Glasses off. The Schenectady County Legislature would like to present this resolution commending the Rotterdam Challenger Tri-County Baseball League for their thirty years of service to our community. Whereas participation in organized sports has many benefits, including development, a healthy lifestyle, getting exercise, improvement of motor skills, development of self-confidence, teaching teamwork, developing social skills, and fostering friendships. Whereas baseball, a sport often referred to as Americans' pastime, is enjoyed by young and old alike, both as players and spectators, and whereas thirty years ago, recognized that there was a need to develop a baseball program that was accessible to all those who loved the game. A dedicated group of volunteers formed the Rotterdam Challenger Tribe County Baseball League for individuals with physical and intellectual challenges. The Rotterdam Challenger Tri-County Baseball League has continued to thrive over the last thirty years and offers programs for children five to sixteen years of age and adults from seventeen to eighty years old. The organization is a hundred percent funded through the generosity of community members, enabling the league to offer its programming to the approximately seventy-five participants free of charge. Whereas the Rotterdam Challenger Tribe County Baseball League and its dedicated core group of approximately thirty volunteers has provided those who might not otherwise have the opportunity to participate in organized sports the chance to enjoy all the benefits of doing so. This program is incredibly rewarding, not just for the players, but for the volunteers and community as well. Now therefore be it resolved that the Schenectady County Legislature hereby commends the Rotterdam Challenger Tri-County Baseball League for their thirty years of service to our community and thanks to those who tirelessly volunteer their time to support the league's important mission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a great honor to be recognized for this. I mean, our new work card. And if you ever, ever really want to see these kids go, we play on Mondays through Thursdays. And we have a big opening day this Sunday or this Saturday at three o'clock. Come on down for raffles, see the games and see the kids. They'll love it. Thank you very much.
When I move to legislative conference in the Rules Committee, be chaired by legislator McDonald. Excuse me, Mr. Fields, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
Very good, legislator Fields.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. The Rules Committee is now come to order. We have three items on the agenda this evening. Resolution number thirty-five, the resolution we just honored here, which is actually commending the Rotterdam Challenger Tri-County Baseball League for the thirty years of service to our community.
Move to report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. This resolution has been moved. Resolution number thirty-six, a resolution regarding the purchase of the property at two fifty-four South Ferry Street in the city of Schenectady, which will be done through the suing Schenectady. So if Ray Gillan can come up and Chris Gardner also.
Good evening. Thank you, legislator Fields. This is a resolution to authorize the purchase of two fifty-four South Ferry Street, would be owned by the county and held in trust for SUNY Schenectady. It is part of our ongoing effort to secure the ability of the college to continue to grow and offer important job training and other services to the community. They cannot grow toward the Riverside, so we have been working with them to obtain property for their programs on the State Street side of the campus. The purchase price is six hundred thousand, which is cut in half by the SUNY match. Net cost of the county is three hundred thousand. Want to thank the county attorney's office, Chris Gardner, Frank Solomon, for their help in drafting the agreements. And of course, Dr. Mono and his team at SUNY Schenectady for working with us to really chart the future of the college in this Lower State Street area. Happy to answer any questions.
Move to report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's been moved. Our final resolution this evening is resolution number, thank you very much, gentlemen. Our final resolution is resolution number thirty-seven, a resolution to authorize the county manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Albany, Saratoga, and Warren Counties regarding assigned council programs. And I think Rory Fuhrman and the Chris Gardner.
So assigned council from four different counties has gotten together to create a partnership for training. Attorneys have a certain amount of continuing education credits that they have to achieve. Our indigent defense services are typically what we call inside our AT&amp;B folks. Those are the people that go to trial first appearances or act in the defense of a person that's been charged in a crime that where there are conflicts or scheduling issues between our public defenders and our conflict officers. So these are very important people. This is Martin Finn, who is our person that runs our indigent defense program here in Schenectady County. And at the end of the day, this partnership between these four counties is going to save money. All these continuing education credits that have to be taken by lawyers. Some, some of it's online, some of it's from speaking engagements are going to continuing classes themselves. Instead of having two or three or four lawyers with a speaker coming for a presentation, the four counties will be able to bond together to have the same cost for the speaker to come and have fifteen, twenty, twenty-five lawyers at one time. So it's cost savings. So I'm asking the legislature tonight for the permission to sign this multi-year, multi-county agreement.
Move to report.
Move to report. May I have a second? Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's been moved. And with that, Mr. Chair, the Rules Committee has come to an end. Thank you very much.
Thank you, legislator Fields. It's now time to open privilege of the floor. Any members of the public wishing to address us this evening, please come to the podium. Give us your name and address for the record and please try to limit your comments to three minutes in a wish to comment during privilege of the floor.
Thank you for allowing me to come. I was here about a year ago, asking you to vote yea on the twelve and thirteen-year-old hunters, which you did nicely. There were only two counties in the state that did not, Rockland and Erie, out of those that could. I would like to give you the synopsis of what happened last year with the in the state of New York. Twelve and thirteen-year-old, there were almost ten thousand licenses issued for hunting. Eighty percent, eighty-five percent were for big game. Out of those ten thousand, were no shooting incidents amongst these juniors. There were no hunting violations and there were no license revocations. These kids did great. I appreciate your support on this. I have two copies to pass around. You can have, and I also have a copy of the entire New York State's last year's hunting incident. So as you voted, I figure you should also see what the outcome became this past year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
I still live in Schenectady County. And I want to go back to my last words with you about Glenn, of the Glendale Nursing Home. I think when it started, it was for the indigent. I don't know whether that's a bad word or not, but it was for people who had no funds and were needed medical treatment. Well, you went into a building program when it was still going in the whole five million dollars a year and you built a facility there that is beautiful. I don't think there's anything more comparable around here for that type of activity, except that a lot of people stayed there. They didn't need to be there, including, I think, the mayor's mother. So anyway, right now, I don't see that you're able to keep anybody there as a director. You, I've, I think you've had six or seven there, and it is a beautiful facility and a lot of the people there are looking across Central Town Road at that ski slope and figuring, I'm still good enough to handle that ski slope. So let's sell the thing. Sell it to somebody who wants to take care of people who want to be, have that kind of a lifestyle. They aren't indigent, so let's sell it, be rid of it, and get out of that business. There are a lot of people around here that make their living running properties like that. So from my point of view, I say, let's sell it. Let's be rid of it. It's a pain. It involves a lot of union people, which are difficult. Union contracts are always difficult. This is much thematic. I don't want to call it Mohawk Harbor, but it's any number of places here. It looks like a honeycomb to me, and I keep it on my living room wall. My sculpt number of apartments that have been built in Schenectady. The other evening, they passed on a hundred and thirty more to be built. And yet, when I look for an apartment, there are no vacancies, none. And they certainly are way out of the gotten really expensive because I don't see the building materials as quality building materials. And these ledges, I think, they suppose everybody's going to have their pet drone and land on it. I've come from the era of airspace. We were building where I worked, we were building everything with airspace for helicopters to land on the hospitals, the banks, we all had to have fuel ports. So in a way, but there was drones. But anyway, there's no vacancies. I'm so, none. And my thoughts, they may be a strike, but there's a reservation, a military reservation up north, and I don't think they want to rehab it. And if they can convert everyone from there into this area, they're still making good money. They're well behaved, their children and the like. The children are willing to sacrifice for the cause and ride bikes, electrified whatever kind they can. So I think these are filling the spaces of a new military reservation. I may be wrong, but they're not building these things. And a lot of them even don't have elevators. That's amazing to me. But anyway. I think that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Seeing no further comments, privilege of the floor is now closed. And now call toward the May regular meeting of the county legislature. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Mr. Russo.
Right.
Ms. Pratt.
Present.
McGill. Mr. Constantine.
Here.
Scata.
Here.
Mr. Frizoni.
Here.
Mr. Cuomo.
Here.
Mr. Paterno.
Present.
Sostol.
Here.
Mr. Hess.
Here.
McGary.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Present.
Mr. McDonald.
Present.
Fifteen present, zero absent.
Thank you, members of the copies of the minutes from the meetings held on April twelfth and April twenty-fifth. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes? No move. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are hereby adopted. Clerk will read the list of reports received.
We received reports from the Commissioner and Finance Department, awaits measures, and the county clerk.
Thank you. Committee reports, legislator Hughes, reports from the Committee on Economic Development and Planning.
Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Economic Development and Planning met on May second, two thousand and twenty-two, reported to the Agenda Resolutions seventy-two and seventy-three.
Thank you. Legislator Frizoni, reports from the Committee on Labor and Civil Service.
Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Labor and Civil Service met on May second, two thousand and twenty-two and reported to the Agenda Resolutions seventy-four and seventy-five.
Thank you, sir. Legislator Fields, reports on the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Rules met early this evening and reported to the Agenda Resolutions sixty-nine, seventy, and seventy-one.
Thank you, sir. Also reports from the Committee on Ways and Means.
And the Committee on Ways and Means met on May second, two thousand and twenty-two and reported to the Agenda Resolutions seventy-four, seventy-five, and seventy-six.
Thank you, sir. Our first item this evening is Resolution sixty-nine dash twenty-two, sponsors or legislators, Como, Hess, Jazinski, and McGary. The clerk will read.
A resolution commending the Rotterdam Challenger Tri-County Baseball League for their thirty years of service to our community.
Any discussion? Seeing no other, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Ms. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Scata.
Yes.
Frizoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Sostol.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Fifteen i zero nine.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution seventy dash twenty-two, sponsors of Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the purchase of property at two fifty-four South Ferry Street in the city of Schenectady.
Any discussion? Seeing no other, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Scata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Sostol.
Yes.
Mr. Hess. Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald. Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Fifteen i zero nine.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution seventy-one dash twenty-two, sponsors of Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution to authorize the manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Albany, Saratoga, and Warren Counties regarding assigned council programs.
Any discussion? Seeing no other, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Scata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Sostol.
Yes.
Mr. Hess. Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Fifteen i zero nine.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution seventy-two dash twenty-two, sponsors, legislator Hughes, the clerk will read.
A resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the Schenectady County Capital Resource Corporation.
Any discussion? Let's set a party.
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, due to my affiliation with Union College, I will be recusing myself from this vote.
Any further discussion? Say Hughes.
Just to summarize what we're doing here, the Capital Resource Corporation is a county entity closely related to the Industrial Development Agency. And it was created with the intent of being able to allow access by not-for-profits such as Union College to the municipal bond market. So we're simply creating a conduit through which Union can enter the municipal bond market at the interest rate savings that are obtainable there. And there actually is a fee that comes back to the Capital Resource Corporation, which as a county entity means that a fee comes back to the county. So there are no county dollars passing through to Union here. And I would encourage folks to vote for this. One of the things that we can do is the CRC is move significantly faster than there. There are some state entities that can do this work for not-for-profits as well. Dormitory authority can, but, but we can be a lot more nimble on this and then have been in this particular case. So Union's intent, I think, for the most part is preventing maintenance and upgrades of existing facilities. And I think there's some refinancing of some earlier, earlier bonds in there as well. So I'd encourage you to support it.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Seeing no other, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Mr. Chairman, I will recuse myself.
Scata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Recues.
Sostol.
Yes.
Mr. Hess. Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Thirteen i, two abstaining.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution seventy-three dash twenty-two, sponsors, legislator Hughes, the clerk will read.
A resolution to authorize the county manager to enter into a license agreement with the Gier Center LLC.
Any discussion? Let's see the use.
We discussed this last week also in committee, but the intent of this resolution is to allow the county to enter into a lease agreement with the Gier Center, formerly known as the Armory. The purpose of this agreement is to lease parking space for the upcoming Van Gogh immersive exhibit that will be taking place at the Armory. So we're just ensuring that folks who come to the immersive experience have a place to park their car while they're being immersed.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Seeing no other, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Scata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Sostol.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Fifteen i zero nine.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Next item is Resolution seventy-four dash twenty-two, sponsors, legislator Frizoni, the clerk will read.
A resolution to create and eliminate certain positions at Glendale Nursing Home.
Any discussion? Seeing no other, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Scata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Sostol.
Yes.
Mr. Hess. Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald. Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Fifteen i zero nine.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution seventy-five dash twenty-two, sponsors, legislator Frizoni, the clerk will read.
A resolution to create and eliminate certain positions at the office of Schenectady County District Attorney.
Any discussion? Seeing no other, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Scata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Sostol.
Yes.
Mr. Hess. Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Fifteen i zero nine.
The resolution's passed. Our next item is Resolution seventy-six dash twenty-two, sponsors, legislator Fields, the clerk will read.
A resolution authorizing a mortgage, mortgage tax distribution of two million eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents to the various municipalities of Schenectady County for the period of October one, two thousand and twenty-one to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Any discussion? Seeing no other, please call the roll.
Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Scata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Sauceful.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Fifteen ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. The resolution has passed, and that concludes our business for this regular meeting this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn? All move. A second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, nay?
Aye.
Let's say you're stand adjourned. Thank you all.